This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order and the chair calls on Assistant City Clerk Ginny Shaver for the roll call.
Councilman Harris.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Avery.
Here.
Eccles.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
And Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum present, the meeting is open for business. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance, for the prayer, and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance and Councilman Cannon will bring our invocation today.
Let us pray. I must praise this heavenly Father, Lord, thank you for such a goodness, Lord, thank you, Lord, for the time that we're here at this meeting, Lord, thank you for everyone that's came this way today, Lord, to try to conduct your business, Lord. We ask that you forgive us for our many sins and shortcomings this past week, always be with us and go with us and just take care of this meeting, Lord, let us do everything that's pleasing to you, for your name and for your sake, I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Chair, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Finance and Public Safety Committee meetings, work session, and council meeting held on June 26. So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Chair, entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of June 22 through the 28. So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
My clamations change. We have no unfinished business today, we have no business today.[133.12][133.12](Laughter). Is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one item to bring up under new business today. I'd ask that we consider resolution authorizing travel advances for one of our council members, as we consider that today.
Second. Is there any discussion? Well, no, this is for to see if we're gonna bring it up, okay.
Those in favor to consider the item as new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, permission is granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Now, is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is just the authorizing of travel advance for Councilman Avery for the NBC Leo Summer Conference.
And the Fair Conference.
And the, I'm sorry, and the National League of Cities Fair Steering Committee meeting as well.
Any other? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to approve the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion is carried.
Is there any other new business?
Mr. President, I have an item here, I'd like to bring up, I'd ask for unanimous consent, and this is a resolution authorizing agreement with Turnback, Warren, Roberts, and Lloyd Attorney Firm.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to consider the item as new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, permission is granted.
Put that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is in lieu of, well, let me not say in lieu of, since our esteemed city attorney is retiring in the next few days here, we're gonna be using this firm to give us legal advice or legal services for a period of 90 days at a rate of $6,000 per month. And I think at the end of those 90 days, we'll look and see how things are going, and I'm not sure what the administration's position is at that point in time, but we'll, for at least for the 90 days, we'll be looking at it.
That'll make it come out at the end of this fiscal year, right?
Yes. You know, again, like I say, he said this fiscal year would probably end at the end of this fiscal year. But I also do know that there are some other things that are happening on the first of the calendar year as far as retirees and some other thing, insurance and benefits, so I don't know if they're gonna extend it for another 90 days or what, but I'm not sure what they're, what they're looking at.
Is there any other new business?
None.
No, is there any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business? Department reports, committees, boards? You're on. She's gonna tell us about First Friday and all kind of good things.
Hi, and then Councilman Reed, you're gonna talk about the fireworks, correct?
Let's just go ahead and state it now.
Okay, all right. The Gadsden Animal Patriots Association will have our fireworks show tomorrow night, Wednesday, July the 4th, 9 o'clock, they'll be shot over the river from behind the bridge, and one way, one reason I want to bring it up is people still think we have fireworks on First Friday. Fireworks are always on the 4th of July, always, always, always. Now, in a couple of years, when we have First Friday on the 4th of July, we'll have fireworks again, but, but the Gadsden Animal Patriots Association will have the fireworks on Wednesday, tomorrow, 9 o'clock, so y'all be careful, be safe, and does anybody know it's hot outside? Have y'all, have y'all figured that out yet?
No, it's hot.
It's hot.
Are you sure?
It's hot, I noticed something in the Gadsden Times that said, you know it's hot, quit complaining about it because we can't do anything about it anyway, so I think that's probably the best way to go. I do want to remind people it is First Friday, this Friday, and because of the heat, we do ask that you be very careful. We, you know, we will have water, the Buffalo Rock donates water to the merchants, so you can pick up free water. Hydrate yourself and just be very careful. This is another time I've suggested, don't bring your pets, and this is really a reason because of the heat this time, you know, you choose to come, your pets don't choose to get their little paws burned off on that asphalt out there, so, you know, for your, for your pet's safety, but for the safety of others, we always discourage pets at First Friday, it's really not a pet friendly event, but we do say, please, this time for sure, leave, leave the pets at home when you come. Another thing, too, we've had some classic cars parking on the sidewalk there between Regions Bank and Merrill Lynch, if anyone watches this and knows someone with a classic car that parks that area, please ask them not to park on the sidewalk. Sidewalks are for walking and not for parking, and we're also having another piece of artwork that probably will be up there maybe by Friday, so, if anybody watches this on TV, we're very appreciative of all the classic cars that come, of all the people who come from out of town to First Friday, but we do need to adhere to our laws, and that's that you don't park on the sidewalk. A lot of money was spent on those papers, and we don't need oil dripping or anything like that, tire marks, anything like that on the sidewalk, so. All that out of the way, it's gonna be a great First Friday, we're just gonna have a good time, Foot Brothers Carpet One invites you to park in their parking lot, if you have a regular car and walk, it's only a couple of blocks, and you can see the entire thing, it's easier to get into and out of there, and it's just really great. One thing we've got is a young man, Tucker Kay, who is 12 years old, and he is part of the, he has a junior dragster, he's won several, several competitions since, starting when he was nine years old, so he's gonna have his little junior dragster, little junior drag, he's gonna have his junior dragster out there, it's got Bear Bryant and Nick Saban's picture on it, so you'll wanna come and see that. It's just gonna be a lot of fun, so we're encouraging people to shop locally, that's what First Friday is all about, shopping locally, but as you shop, you can enjoy the entertainment. We've got Valley Road that's gonna be at the Mary G. Harden Center for Cultural Arts. If you haven't known, a tribute to Boogie McCain, Boogie was scheduled to play at this First Friday, so with his death, we got together, I got together with Danny Moon and said, hey, let's have a tribute, this is our final tribute to Boogie McCain, and so we'll have some great musicians playing there in front of BB&amp;T, they're gonna be really, really good, and they're gonna be playing Boogie's music, so that's gonna be an interesting thing to have that happen. Third and Broad, we've got Mr. Blackwell's Petty Thieves, a bunch of young men who are great local people, and they do a good job, and the Durhams will be at Alpha Insurance. So, that, and then, you know, we've got the Dancing in the Streets at Sixth and Broad, the DJs there, and then Ramona's La Diva Boutique, they're having a Carver reunion, they're inviting the people that are coming down for the Carver reunion to come down that way and hear the, hear the DJ that they'll have down there, too, so, then, of course, you've got the Courtyard Concert Series, there's music everywhere, there's food in the 400 block, which is our food court block, so you can come and you can eat, and you can listen, and you can walk around and see new friends, and just have a great time, that's what First Friday's all about, but please remember to shop our local merchants, and help them keep this air conditioner running in their, in their stores, so. Now, that's First Friday, when First Friday's over, that's from 6 until 9, when First Friday's over, starting at 9 o'clock, at the Summer Concert Series, the amphitheater, we'll have Bill Avery and his band, so that's gonna be a great time, you can bring your cushion and bring your coolers, and just sit back and relax, Bill plays some great music, so we're looking forward to that, and we're just gonna have a good time, I mean, that's what it's all about, bringing people to our lovely downtown, and that's, that's what we're trying to do, so.
Downtown is really beautiful now with all the green trees and the crepe myrtles and.
The crepe myrtles have really bloomed out, and they are, they are absolutely beautiful, so, yeah, we're very proud of our downtown, I had probably the greatest compliment I've had, the artist who, who did the artwork in front of BB&amp;T, The Charm, if you've seen The Charm, she was here at the Walnut Gallery, and she and her 16-year-old daughter, when they drove into town, the 16-year-old daughter said, Mom, this reminds me of Fairhope, oh my, you know, that's, that's the biggest compliment a downtown, I think, can have, so, we're working to get that way, and we're trying to keep our downtown beautiful and clean, and we're just, we're just, we appreciate everybody coming, so. You know, people say all the time, you do such a great job with First Friday, but if the people didn't come, it wouldn't be a success, so thank you to all the people who come locally and from out of town, we are very, very glad that you're, that you're coming, just beware of the heat this time.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Kay, are you able to say, are you?
I'm sorry, David.
Are you at liberty to say anymore about the new artwork that you mentioned earlier?
Yes, Craig Wetherspoon from Tuscaloosa, I don't know, he's had, he's had an exhibit at the Gadsden Museum of Art, and he's had an exhibit at the Center for Cultural Arts. His artwork is more of a cylindrical piece that's gonna be about three feet by five feet, it's gonna be on that sidewalk there between Regions Bank and Merrill Lynch. It's an aluminum type thing that you can actually, I hate to say this, crawl into, but I mean, it's made to do that, so, I mean, for kids, if they wanted to get in there and stand, I think you'll be able to do that, so hopefully, it may be up by Friday, I'm not sure, Mario Gallardo from the Walnut Gallery has been instrumental in getting these two pieces that we've got coming here, we have another one possibly that's gonna be moved from Gadsden State over to Broad Street also. That's, that's one thing, it brings pedestrian traffic downtown, when people will stop and walk downtown, you will see much more than you'll see as you just drive up and down the street, so, that's one big reason for public art, is to help bring people downtown, so, but yes, that's gonna be a great piece of artwork that we're gonna have.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Thank you very much, I'll look forward to seeing all of y'all on Friday night.
Thank you. Any other department reports? Citizens request Regina Talton to talk to us about retiree insurance.
Thank you, gentlemen, for allowing me to come and speak to you about a concern that I have. My name is Regina Talton, my husband is a retired firefighter for the city of Gadsden. I'm not here to debate a question with the need, the wisdom, or the legitimacy of your decision to change the insurance, to drop the retirees and move them at 65 to the Medicare Supplement Plan, that's not why I'm here, but I do have concerns about the insurance, over the way that it's being implemented. I am younger than my husband, so when he becomes 65, I will no longer be covered in the insurance. I was asked, I watched, asked the people when we were at our meeting about the new insurance, what about the spouses that are younger? I was told, well, you're in the unlucky group, in other words, I won't have insurance when my husband turns 65. I will be allowed to take Cobra, which I believe you know is more expensive than what most people can afford. I ask that the mayor and the council reconsider this issue concerning us, the younger spouses of the retirees, and gentlemen, I'm not asking you to give us free insurance, only that you consider our situation and offer us a fair and financially acceptable solution, instead of telling us that, sorry, you're the unlucky ones, I just don't think that's acceptable, and I, I don't think that's the best you can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed Watley?
Thank you, Mr. President, council members, and audience, I've been asked to say a few words about the new Black Creek Trail, and I will try not to bore you too much.
Five minutes.
Is it up yet? Anyway, recently, the last mile and a half section of it was completed, and they had a decoration and a ribbon cutting, so now there's a two-mile section of the trail open from the Wedding Chapel to Megan Boulevard, and it's ready for your bicycles and your feet, so, y'all need to get up and use it, and I'd like to give you a quick history of the trail that I've kinda found was interesting. The original idea for the trail came from Danny Crownover, he is a retired city employee and now a local historian with the Etowah County Historical Society, but recently, I read in the paper that the original idea for a trail from the falls to where the creek ran into the Coussa River and later Lake Gadsden, came in 1950. At that time, some tentative plans and designs were made and presented to the city, but it didn't go anywhere, and those plans kinda got put on the back burner and on the shelf, and finally just died. So, let's fast forward to 2005, a group of individuals in the area got together and to discuss some bicycle and pedestrian and quality of life issues that thought would be good for the city and the surrounding area. Well, since we were an independent committee, everything we talked about, since we were not connected to any individual or any entity that could further our aims, it kinda withered on the vine. So, forward to 2007, a mandate came down from the Federal Highway Administration that all the state Department of Transportation people and their, each state's corresponding MPOs should have advisory committees, and whatever advisory committees they thought they needed to promote the aims of the MPO, well, and one of the committees in this area was a Bicycle, Pedestrian and Greenway Committee, and to get it started, they kinda brought in the former members of the ECAT Committee, which was the Etowah County Committee for Alternative Transportation, so they brought in that just to get the advisory committee started. Well, when that happened, we had finally had some status and some legitimacy, so we discussed various and sundry projects for bicycles and pedestrian things and other quality of life issues, and it wasn't long before the Black Creek Trail came up again. So, in subsequent meetings, we discussed the trail and stuff, but it was getting nowhere, so I decided that if anything was ever gonna happen, I better start lobbying some people, so I started heavily lobbying some city officials, and it got so bad that some of them, when they saw me coming, they turned and went the other way, or others, they seen me coming to tell the secretaries to tell me they wasn't in, which is all right, that's the way it works, I mean, like the French say, c'est la vie, you know? But anyway, about 2009, the city started getting interested, they said, hey, you know, this may not be such a bad idea, so the city planning office started doing some planning and came up with some initial designs and stuff, and they started looking for funding, and they started applying for grants, and the city got two grants that helped get things started, the first one was a Recreational Trails Grant from Aideco, and that helped start the first half-mile section of it, and that project got started, I think, in fall of 2010, well, during that time, we also got a, oh, Transportation Enhancement Grant from Aldott, and that allowed us to go from where the first half-mile ended all the way down to Megan, so, it all culminated, the contract had finished up about the 1st of June in this year, and about two weeks ago, they had a dedication and ribbon cutting, and, so, now we got a two-mile section of it open, and if I've got time, I'd like to give a quick verbal walkthrough, and I'll try to be quick, you can, you'll have time to meet it, gun. Okay, what is a Black Creek Trail? The Black Creek Trail is a bicycle and multi-use pedestrian facility, and the first 1.6 miles of it, the surface is a small crushed stone compacted surface, where it comes out of the woods at Black Creek Road, it becomes an eight-foot wide concrete sidewalk. So, starting off at the Wedding Chapel, you pass the Law Memorial and go down to the rental cabins, and between the Law Memorial and the cabins, there are three overlooks that you can go and you can look down in the gorge and see all the pretty scenery there. From the Wedding, from the rental cabins, it fears away from Black Creek, goes down in the woods, and you come to an 81 to 83-foot bridge crossing Cascade Creek. Right past that, you go through a zigzag switchback to get you back up on level ground, and that was the end of the first half-mile project, and the new project started there, went back toward Black Creek, and when it got to the edge of Black Creek, started turning, started downhill, and you immediately come to a humongous overlook, I mean, that thing's so big, you could hold a dance on it, dance contest on it, and you can look down in the gorge, and you can see far up and down the gorge, and it's beautiful. At that point, the trail becomes steep, you start steeply going downhill to the bottom of the hill where it levels out, and you come to an area they call Rocky Shores, the locals call it Rocky Shores, and I understand, back in the day, that was a very popular place for kids and adults, swimming, fishing, or whatever you do with water activities. Okay, past that, you cross a wooden boardwalk that's designated a wetlands area, immediately pass out another pedestrian bridge, crossing a branch that direct, then enters directly into Black Creek, and from there, for three tenths to four tenths miles, you got a level trail that comes out on Black Creek Road. At that point, the trail becomes an eight-foot wide concrete sidewalk, and you cross a prefabricated metal bridge, you go up the rescue squad, cross the railroad tracks, Boys Club, Floyd Elementary School, the fire station, and it ends right at, just short of Megan Boulevard, so, that's a quick verbal walkthrough now. This trail is great for this community, it's something the community's needed for a long time, it's great for the citizens of Gadsden, it's great for the citizens of the surrounding area, and it is great for tourism. Now, Hugh Stump, the Etowah County Tourism Director, is going to combine both sections of the trail to the two-mile thing, and put it on the Alabama Recreational Trails website in Montgomery, and that should be helpful for tourism. So, again, that trail is a great for this area, it is a great thing for the Nakalula Complex, both the park, the falls, the campground, and now this, and I hope the city promotes it appropriately. And I'll end with this, if you're a bicycle rider up in the mountain area, the only safe way to get off the mountain on a bicycle is to use the Black Creek Trail. Thank you, Mr. President. Was that quick enough?
Thank you, Ed, you did good. I believe, I believe Ed's got a little, little time and effort involved in that.
Just a little.
Seems like he's a.
Just a little bit.
Just a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Remarks by the mayor and the council, Roberts, you wanna start this one?
I can. Ed has a passion for this thing, and Ed gave us a little history, he talked about when he did his research in 1950 is when it started, well, that's about part, Ed, I mean, government works, but it works slow, so, we, we, we finally got around to do it, but I just want to take this opportunity to welcome all of the Calv alumni's and their families and friends who've come into town this week, I understand that they've been arriving and picking up packages, as a matter of fact, I gotta go pick up a package as soon as I leave here, but we just wanna welcome everybody, hope everybody have a good time while they're here, and chief, if some of your men stop them and they say they're with the Calv Alumni Association, have them call Billy, don't call me, 'cause I won't be able to help them, I don't do tickets, but anyway, surely we're gonna have a great time, and I'm just looking forward, like I say, we'll probably have people who hadn't been back to town maybe in 40 years, it looks like every time we have this reunion, somebody new comes back who hadn't been here in a while, so I'm just looking forward to see who that's gonna be this time around, but we always have fun, and so we're just looking forward to that, and have a safe fourth, that's all I have.
Yeah.
I just wanted to thank Ed for his endurance and his persistence in completing the Black Creek Trail, it's really nice, what he did, he made us walk that thing before the trail was, and he said, if you don't support it, you'll have to walk it again, we got behind it, it was quite, quite a little journey, wasn't it, Ed?
It was.
But anyway, thank you for your efforts, and his efforts made that happen. Just wanna remind everybody to be very, very careful with the fireworks, it's awfully dry out there, you can set something on fire if you're not really, really careful, so, that's, that's all I have, just be very careful with the fireworks this year, the dryness.
David?
Thank you, Mr. President, and then let me echo some of the sentiment about Ed and his commitment to the trail, I, you know, I don't think anybody can mistake his passion, but, you know, let's not forget, you know, he is very much a subject matter expert as it relates to those things, and it's these kinds of people that help really drive initiatives that sometimes would otherwise get, get missed, so we definitely appreciate that, and for those of you who haven't walked it, you know, and Councilman Cannon can attest to this, you know, if you're planning to walk one way, please start at the Wedding Chapel and go downhill, because if you make the mistake of trying to come, trying to come back uphill seconds, you're gonna be in trouble, so, but it is, it is a very beautiful project, so we're really proud of it here. Of course, you know, I likewise wanna echo what's been said about the Carver alumni, and I do wanna welcome them to our city, and welcome them back to their city, 'cause this is still their home and their city, and we're excited about their level of commitment to some of the events that are, that are upcoming this week. One quick word about the 411 project, I think we were able to confirm here recently that the, that the state, Aldott, has received the agreements, both from the city and from the county, so, so all systems seem to be pointing in the direction of our, of this project being let for bidding in July, so, so again, we're excited about that and look forward to moving forward with that, with that project. I do wanna thank the folks at Dwight Baptist Church, I actually attended their God and Country event on Sunday, and Dr. Charles Kelly from New Orleans, I think, delivered a very riveting message, and he gave a very, very historical perspective on how important peaceful, peaceful protest is to, to what's happened and to the progress of this country, so I do wanna thank, thank them for the invite and a wonderful experience there. And the last thing is I'll, I'll just speak very briefly to the, the legal services agreement that we discussed today, you know, at this point, you know, Rogers left us with, was leaving us with some big shoes to fill, he's still, we're still gonna squeeze a little bit more work out of him here over the next couple of weeks, but he's, he's left us with some big shoes to fill, so, with that being said, just understand that what we've developed and what we voted on today is a short-term solution, it actually gives us a little time to, one, use a, a very skilled. It actually gives us a little time to, one, use a very skill firm, I think, but it also gives us an opportunity to effectively analyze this, to determine what the best path forward is for the city. So, stay tuned and just know, if you missed the discussion upstairs, we are fully vetting this scenario, the various scenarios to determine what's best for the city. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to thank Ed for being instrumental in about the trail. I have to do walk it a couple of times a week, and I always agree with everything Ed says, but that last point he said, when it's probably safer to come down the trail, that is, come down Nakalula Road. Well, yeah, the other day, I seen a pretty good crash right around those rocks he was talking about. Some guy looked back on a bicycle, and he ran off. You already got into Black Creek there. But just be careful and safe when you go down, going down on the bicycle, because it's, you can get some speed going down, but going up you can't, so just be real careful. And I do want to wish everyone a happy Fourth of July. Don't forget about the fireworks tomorrow night at nine o'clock, and just be patient with everybody on the Alba Range out here when they start shooting them. That's all I got.
Really?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. I too would like to, and I don't think we can say too much about this, but I would think that if it were not for Ed, I don't know if the Nakalula Trail would be there today. Due to his diligence, it is there, and I can say that we should invite everyone up to walk the trail. Ed got me up there before the trail was completed. And I tell you, before they, well, before it was, how much was completed when we walked that trail?
Half mile.
Half mile. So, we walked it, and he showed me all the plans and everything that was going to materialize up there. But it is, it is a challenge, but it's beautiful. It's a beautiful walk, and the serenity down there, in the mountains and the gorges down there, it's just beautiful. Serene and quiet and just, you know, if you have a chance, do it. Fourth of July, we celebrate the birth of our nation. And we, what we do is we have fireworks, and we have barbecue, and baked beans, and potato salad, you know. We do those things, and we do them with pleasure and keeping in mind the significance of that day, rather than just a day to have fireworks. Keep that in mind. And be safe when you're doing fireworks. We know that it's going to happen, but be cautious. Parents, make sure you're supervising kids when they're using, when their fireworks are exploding all around them. Make sure that they don't come up with some accidents. I'd also like to say that the Carver reunion is underway. I think last week, Chief, we said we're going to be cordial to all of our retirees to home to the reunion. But now, Robert said, you know, if you stop any of the Carver alumni who are here for this event, for them to call me. Don't do that, you'll be in trouble. Don't do it, you'll be in trouble, I'm telling you. Have a good time, you know, but, you know, obey the laws. Obey the laws, because I'm not one that can help you if you get in trouble. So, but I do know that we're going to have a good time. The events that they have planned, we're going to have a good time. The primary events are the Get Acquainted Luncheon on Thursday at 12 o'clock at Convention Hall, and the dance Friday night at Convention Hall. Now, and the parade, Watson, the parades, four to six on Friday evening. We'd also like to say that, at the same time Carver's reunion is going on, we're going to be having First Friday, and Bill Avery's going to be down there on Friday night at the amphitheater. So, we're going to have a lot of activities, First Friday, then First Saturday. I understand it's going to be happening on Tuscaloosa Avenue. I just caution everybody to be careful and be considerate of other people. Just do that, and I think we'll get through this weekend in good shape. My 50th reunion for Carver High School will be a banquet on Saturday night at Carver. So, that, there's so many activities. Fifty years from Carver High School, and we have, we have at least, at least, I think, 60, 60 registrants that are going to be there for that event alone. So, Chief, we'll have a lot of people in here, and we just want to make sure that they're safe, everybody's safe for the weekend. I thank you, that's all I have.
Yeah, Billy, I wanted to ask you something. Our chairman at the Patriots is going to speak at Lincoln Hill Cemetery of July the Fourth. Is it Friday?
Thursday. Thursday, Thursday, I'm sorry, Thursday.
What time?
Thursday.
Four o'clock.
Okay. I want to make sure. Go ahead.
I was going, I'm sorry, I had that down to do, and I didn't do it. There will be a Patriots-type celebration of veterans on Thursday at 4:00 p.m. at Lincoln Hill Cemetery. And Ricky Vaughn will be the speaker. They're going to be honoring all veterans. I think they're already in the process of putting flags out and a number of other events there, so they're asking the public to come out on Thursday afternoon.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, first of all, we want to welcome Luke Talafaro. You thought I'd mess it up. Luke is from Hoax Bluff High School, right, Luke? All right. It's always good to see young folks come to council meetings, it really is. And a word to our trail man, Ed, when did we start? Ninety-six? There wasn't anything down there but a big rock. But I got to say, that man lives in my district. And I want, if you ever need a lobbyist, for the last, what, 15 years, you my lobbyist. Is that, when the heavy push came on?
Yeah, that's, that's when he made me walk it. Before they got, before they started working on the trail.
Oh, yeah. Everybody, it's unbelievable what all went on, and you were given the history of that. But it came right down, and I got to hand it to the city, we stepped up too with the grant, they applied, we applied. We also provided half the money with all the work that y'all did. That culminated, and it got done. And I appreciate it. You know I appreciate all the work. I've given you a bad time 15 years with that. You said it right, that's the way it happens. I never did run from you, I don't think. Today at 2:00, the funeral for Jim Laverne, who's a longtime funeral director at Collier Butler. I did want to say that. Jim was a friend of mine, and I just wanted to recognize that. I want to thank Steve Shields and his crew for the work that they did on Sherwood Drive last week. We had a death on that street, and we had some problems. And his crew, Steve Shields and his crew, got together two different times and came up there and really worked on it and got it straightened out, and I appreciate that so much. District Seven meeting, I want to quickly thank again Chief Crane and Captain May and Glenda Battles, who, by the way, Chief, I didn't even introduce at the meeting afterwards. Well, I do things like that, don't I, Billy? No problem there. And Sergeant Keener, as I said, and Billy Harris was there. Tashawn Hill and the Kewanas crew, they did a fabulous job, especially when you factor in around 200 people showed up. It was unbelievable. We had a real good meeting, but I want to go back and thank those people and the Kewanas for handling that for us real well. On July the Fourth, hey, y'all, all in the world you can say is, David, just be safe with the fireworks and the blowing. If you're in traffic, go home. Less travel, you probably won't get run over if you're not out there. That's what I say. Go home, Nate. Anyway, have a safe time, and come to the fireworks at 9:00 that night. Appreciate it.
Mr. President, I did have one other quick point. And I didn't want to lose sight of Ms. Talton and her concern. We do appreciate, always appreciate the manner in which, you know, folks present their cases when they do it civilly, so thank you for that. That was one of many tough decisions that had to be made throughout that process. A lot of discussion went into how to help, how to help various retirees and their families manage through some of the new expenses that may come out of that. So, do want to encourage you to reach out to the benefits department for some guidance on how to manage, because there are some services out there, some consulting services and other ways that may help you augment some of the new expenses. And again, we do ask you to reach out to the benefits department for that support.
I'm not sure how this new healthcare bill is going to affect you too. It might help.
The two attorneys that are going to take Rogers' place for at least 90 days are with us today. I'd like to introduce Jack Lee Roberts, Jr. His daddy has been at Goodyear for lots of years.
Couple days.
And Laura Lloyd. See, it takes two, two young attorneys to take an old man like Rogers' place. You should be honored, Roger, that it takes two to take your place. Anyway, we wish Roger the best. He's been here a day or two. He probably knows municipal law as good or better than anybody in the state, so good luck to you, Roger. I think now he's going out and make more money. When they leave government work, then they go out and get rich, so Roger, I hope that happens to you. If there's not anything else, I'll entertain a motion, adjourn.
Hold on.
Please adjourn.